Here we go. County's turning.
We have.
So here's you, Ryan.
Or when I spill something on it and I got to explain.
Welcome everyone to the meeting of one county DPW. Tramitos is on the phone and on the line. Kevin, do you want to start with Parks and Recreation?
Yes, that would be good. We can start with Parks and Rec.
Mr. Conover, you need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Chair, I'm taking the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. So move. At the end of second, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you everyone. Now we'll move right into our Parks and Recreation Railroad agenda. Kevin, what do we have here?
Well, I think I'm going to turn it over to Tim, but I'm not sure that I see him on the screen. Is he there, Tim?
He was.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Tim, you there?
I'm here. Hello?
Hi there. We're turning it over to you.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, the first item we have is to notice who intend the position of building maintenance mechanic. We had one gentleman that decided to move on in the DPW department, which leaves me opening for the building maintenance mechanic.
All right, let's bring this to the floor for discussion. I have a motion to bring this to the floor. Mr. Merlino on the motion, thank you, Gene, a second. Mr. Thomas on the second, thank you, what, discussion? There being none. This is an existing budgeted position, correct, that was just?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we ready for the question then? All those in favor of filling the position or billing maintenance mechanic signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Tim, anything?
Yeah, the next, we'll go, there's no more action agenda items this morning, so we'll go right into information for discussion review.
Sure.
And again, I'll turn it over to Tim for the stocking report.
The stocking report, spring stocking was a new program developed by the state so that we would not overlap each other. It went fairly smoothly, I'll say. It was early this year because of the spring temperatures and the thaw, but it went well, like I said. Thirteen thousand fifty rainbow, ten thousand two hundred and seventy Brook Trail. All derbies were stocked, unfortunately, they weren't held because of COVID-19. We hope to see that return next year. The fish have been allocated from this year's program for once again for next year, 2022 derbies. And then we'll resume fall stocking approximately mid-September into October when we do what we call the Heritage Stream, the salmon stocking in Lake George, and then we do what they call this new program called Fall Super Yearlings. They've actually let us hold on to these throughout an extra six months or so, and they're calling them super yearlings. So that'll start again, like I said, mid-September to October. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone? Great program, I mean, not only for the kids, but for residents and certainly for visitors. You can, you can take a look at almost any pond, lake, river, and see the fishermen lined up. It's really a wonderful thing. All righty, next item.
The next one is Clamp Adirondack Summer Housing. I'll let Mr. Hedges talk to that.
So Supervisor Hogan came to me probably about a month ago. She was contacted, actually, she was in a meeting, I'm not sure where it was, maybe economic development or employment and training meeting, and she was discussing kind of housing and that there was a housing shortage for individuals coming to work in the county this summer. Andrew Paschetti, Paschetti, who is doing the Clamp Adirondack, basically had stated to her that he'd be willing to house some employees, not for him per se, but if, if somebody needed housing for employees in five or six of his tents. I don't think it's an issue based on his contract. I mean, it's no different, we're allowing him to have individuals camp out there in those campsites. It, I don't think this impacts that contract, and I can have Robert touch base on it if he'd like, but the bottom line is he was offering up probably five or six of his tents to be used for housing for summer employment. So I, I'd let Supervisor Hogan that I would bring that up to the meeting.
And you're bringing it up for just for informational?
Ju- just for informational purposes.
The town's aware of this request? Town or weren't for?
We are now.
Okay.
And again, I'm not sure if Robert has any issues based on the contract, but again, I think it's no different than them having individuals stay in their tent. I mean, if I wanted to go use their tent for the entire summer, I could stay there the entire summer if I was willing to pay for it. So I'm sure when he offers it up to whomever may need to house employees in there, if it happens, I'm sure he would give those, those places of business a discount to have them stay there.
Any other questions? There being none? Move on.
Next item. Oh, go ahead. Tim, you want to do it, or you want me to?
The next item is the kinetic sand. It's actually a specially formulated sand that is easily molded into shapes and mimics the physical properties of wet sand. What we want this for is soil and water have gotten up beyond a topo box, which actually mimics like the erosion. They can set up any kind of like demographic as far as streams, mountains. So this sand is needed for this box that they purchased for us last year. And I guess Kevin could actually comment more of what we're actually doing here, but this is what the sand is for and what it's used for.
The, the box that Tim's referring to is called an augmented reality sandbox. And basically what it does is, it's, as he said, this kinetic sand will mold to the shapes that you use it. But this, this augmented reality sandbox basically has a kind of projection. And when you move the sand inside this box, it'll actually draw contours in the sand. So it'll, you know, you can do shapes in the mountains, and it's a teaching tool basically that we're going to use. If any of you go onto YouTube, you can type in augmented reality sandbox, you'll see how neat this really is. So again, it's not, we don't necessarily need approval, you know, I can give the approval to purchases. I just wanted to let everyone know that we've worked with soil and water on this, and they're going to cover the cost of the, we'll pay for it upfront, but then they'll cover the cost of the sand.
Brett?
Thank you, Mr. Brett. Chairman, that sounds better than a etch and sketch, so.
Much, much better.
What we grew up with.
That's the first time I've heard of this.
Yeah, I, I actually wish, I don't know if, if Tammy could maybe pull up a YouTube video and put it on the screen, but you'd see how, how neat this really is. It's, and it's, it's an excellent learning tool, especially for, you know, anybody who's in environmental science or, you know, any of those programs. It's, it's, it's an excellent teaching tool, that's all I can say.
Railroad property.
So I, I've handed out to the members of the committee a map showing property up in Johnsburg next to the railroad. There's two acres there, there's, are two properties. There's one that's 6.85 acres, and there's another one that's kind of point four seven acres. You'll see on the map, they're shown as hatch areas. The town of Johnsburg is looking to pick up these parcels. I spoke with Supervisor Hogan about it. As you see on the map, they have the property next door that has the gazebos. They're looking kind of to expand on that property so they could have, you know, kind of a property along the, the river there that they could use for their summer concert series and things like that. So they'll have to subdivide the property, so they'll have to go through a survey. I believe Andrea's already gone to her board to seek approval on getting a survey. I have been asked the question, is it land that we necessarily need? It's not, it's, you know, it's, it's property that's on the other side of the railroad. I don't use it for maintenance, there is the other gazebo that's there that they have a tendency to use in the summer times. But again, it's, it's, I would still keep the track and, and probably anywhere from 35 to 50 feet away from the center line of track for kind of railroad right away there. So again, I'm not looking for approval right now, I'm just wanting to bring it to everybody's attention. If there's any questions or comments or whether or not we should keep it, I figured I could address them here. And then we could possibly ask Supervisor Hogan, you know, to move forward if that's what she'd like to do.
Any comments from Supervisor? I'm Mr. McGowan.
Thank you again. Did you say you had a map?
Yes, I, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Thank you.
That's fine.
Well, this is the second parcel. Didn't we have one the last month for Johnsburg? That's one that seems that people buy on the tax map and, and then find out that they really can't do anything with it. We kind of donated to.
That one happened to be along one of their roads, nothing that was brought through my committee. It's, it's, it was property along one of their roads that someone had purchased probably through the foreclosure auction.
It was.
And they ended up, you know, donating that to the town, and the town can use it for right of way. Most towns have very limited right of way along their roads, or it's right of way by you. So anytime that they can pick up a piece of right of way that they could use as a kind of a maintenance area or something along their roads, all the more better for them.
And is any of the property along the river there, is it, you know, going to be used future for beach or?
No, I don't believe so. It's not conducive to have, say, a beach there, and they have some of their walking trails, and it's very hard to pick up in the map. They, they have some of their walking trails over there as well.
Well, nice, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll make sure this doesn't fall under parklands in any way. Make sure there wasn't any, you know, state or federal parkland funds involved. Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm quite familiar with this property, and I think it's, it's an excellent use. I think it, the town Johnsburg, they'll put it to good use and like to see this. It's something that, that we don't need, and as Mr. Hedges said, you know, we'll maintain some right of way there for the railroad. So I think it's, I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Access would be from their property there, the word it says Town of Johnsburg, is that to the north?
That's correct, and they, they actually come across our railroad anyways. You'll see where there's the road that leads to their property.
Mm-hmm, I see it. The primary access would be from their property to the north.
That's correct.
Any other comments or concerns? Mr. Garrett.
Is the old barn still on this property, or is that north of this?
There is. Tim, you can probably talk to this more, because you know more of the property than I do. There, there's the one barn that's on their property, or the two barns that are on their property, the one that's on the County Warren property is just a gazebo, correct, Tim?
Yes, we have, the Waddell Building was redone by the Heritage Trail Corridor Grant, and they tore down the old waystation, and then at the time, when we still had the Kellogg, they referred it to as the Kellogg Building. We refinished that, put a new roof, siding, and then added two pavilions. That's all that exists there now.
Okay, thanks.
Just, just the waystations, the only building that came down, the old white one, if you remember, it was old and white.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay. There being no other comments, then we'll be seeing more on this going forward, Kevin?
Yes, we will.
Okay, very good. We can move on to the next item if you like.
The, the last item we have on there is referral and pending items. Last committee, we discussed having electric bikes on the bike path. There was a, a referral to have the representatives of Adirondack cycling advocates to the next committee meeting. Tim and I are still working through some of the agreements that were done way back when, but I do have JP Fasano as well as, I'm not sure I see Harrison or anyone else here, but they could kind of give, you know, their, their take on it. Again, as last month, they brought a lot of information to the committee on the New York State laws. But I think that's probably, JP was the one who actually brought this to Harrison, who in turn brought it to us so that we could get electric bikes on there. So he's a bicycle advocate, and he's actually looking to have these on the bike path. So if you allow me, Chairman Conover, I would turn it over to JP.
No, that's fine.
Okay, well, thank you for having me on. Actually, I don't want to say that I'm an advocate, I, I just think it's something that we have to look at and consider. You know, this is something that is coming, and it is something that could, you know, help differentiate our bikeway and help attract tourists. Some people would come here and use it if e-bikes were allowed. So a couple of comments. One is that the bikeway currently states that no motor vehicles prohibited, there were no motor vehicles. An e-bike or an electric assist bike by New York State law's definition is not a motor vehicle. So those signs do not preclude e-bikes from being on the bikeway. It is my understanding that e-bikes are not allowed on the bikeway unless Warren County allows them to be on there. There are some organizations in New York State that are allowing e-bikes. So there is a policy that the New York State Canal Corporation has put in a policy for their trails, or some of their trails to allow e-bikes, and also the New York State Parks Trails and Historic Sites. The Albany Electric, so it's Albany Hudson Electric Trail, is working on a policy for allowing e-bikes. So this is really totally up to Warren County whether they want to do that or not. You know, our bike trail is quite hilly as bike trails go, and so, you know, having e-bikes on them could be, you know, an advantage. I mean, what I would, you know, add, what I would suggest is that, you know, you, you do allow e-bikes, and you put a speed limit of 15 miles per hour. I mean, that's not that uncommon. There are, I'm out in Boulder, Colorado right now, which is a, it's a bike riding Mecca, and there is a speed limit out here of 15 miles per hour. The CNO Canal Trail north of Washington to Annapolis has a speed limit of 15 miles per hour. Locally, the Zim Smith Trail in Saratoga has a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. I mean, that's, in, in my opinion, is way too fast when you've got a multi-use trail. So, you know, this is something that, you know, Warren County has to decide what they want to do. E-bikes are, you know, they're a, a future wave, you know, we can allow them or not. I mean, and, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's a joint decision. I, I think it's something that, you know, if we were able to move quickly on it, it would differentiate us and, you know, help attract people to our area. Dennis?
Yes, this is interesting. My wife and I purchased e-bikes last year for a lot of reasons. We use them a lot, and I would be disappointed if I couldn't take my e-bike on the bike trail.
Right, well, you can certainly see people using them, but I don't know that they're legally using them.
Well, that's my point.
Yeah.
You know, contrary to what everybody believes, I'd rather have them there legally.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's coming, and, you know, it's, it's a matter of whether we want to be a leader or a follower in this.
Well, I think we should definitely embrace them. I can tell you, a few years ago, I did a survey along the bike trail, and I sat up on the bike trail, and some guy came down the bike trail, he wasn't doing 50 miles an hour, he wasn't moving, and he went by me like a streak, and it was totally, totally silent. I mean, if I'd stepped back, he would have killed me probably himself. So I, I don't, I don't think the e-bikes, my e-bike goes 20 miles an hour.
Right, so the.
I don't, I don't think the speed limit's an issue.
Right, the Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes are supposed to be limited at 20 miles an hour. The motors are supposed to turn off, and the Class 3 e-bikes are not legal in New York State outside of New York City.
Well, I'd be all in favor of, of allowing the e-bikes on the trail. Especially with. Yeah, speed limit of 20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I live off of Birdsill Road here in Queensbury, and I get a lot of people coming up around Country Club, you know, and for years, and it's really a happy time to see all the bicyclists and, and using the trail. So I've been, you know, following along with this, and, and I have to say that I have seen a lot more older people, and I mentioned it in a meeting before, my brother-in-law does sell these things. Actually, you know, high line to police departments and that, and it's the first time I've been on a bike in 20 years. And I have to say it, I, I enjoyed it because I, I wasn't worried about those little hills. And, 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 you know, they're, they're actually, technically, I, I've looked into them, and they're, they're rated for 27.8 miles an hour, all right? Some of the higher ends for.
That's, that's a Class 3.
All right, that's a Class 3, that's the higher end. So, but really, most people use them for, really for the, you know, the assist of them. And I have seen people on the, you know, the 10-speed road bikes going much faster than on the, on the bike trail, and also, you know, cutting the, the stop sign at the bottom of the hill. Those are the ones I worry about when I'm traveling, heading to and from home. Birdsill is, is a lot of those. So I, I think it's a great thing. I, I see a lot more people riding them. Actually, the other weekend, I met a gentleman that's diabetic, and he says, I, I have to do a very minimal watch my, my food, and I ride rain or shine on my e-bike up to Lake George once a day, and it keeps his numbers at, at a, a super low level for him. So I, I think it's a great opportunity for us to jump on the bandwagon and, and do allow them. And, and if we need to put the speed limit up, you know, a speed limit is, is just to sign and only be obeyed by the people that want to obey it, so.
Any other comments from?
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Gene, absolutely.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, I, I agree, I think this is a well-worked process now that we're even getting involved in the bikes around Glens Falls and in Lake George, the rental ones, so that would give them a place to go and stay off the roads. I, I think it's a great idea.
Well, it's the, Mr. Stroud.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chairman. The, the speed issue really is only an issue, or is especially an issue, maybe I should word it that way. When you're passing others on the trail, especially pedestrians and especially children who may make erratic moves. So when passing, I usually slow down on my bicycle to something around five miles an hour, or possibly even less, because even though I say on your left, they may not know what that means, they may turn around and move in my way, so I'm going slow. When I'm looking in front of me and I got a quarter mile of empty space, I would probably exceed the 20 mile an hour speed limit. But there's nobody in my way. So the issue is, when passing other people, I think that's when you have to be especially careful, and maybe perhaps we have signage that says when passing, passing others, the speed limit is five miles an hour. So, or maybe perhaps we do both, have the 15 mile per hour speed limit, but also a note of caution that when passing others, you have to be even slower. But I support the e-bike because are, there are people with medical issues and physical issues who I want to see on the bike trail, I want to see them getting exercise. And e-bikes is the only way they're going to do it. And so, you know, the, the power assisted, you got to pedal it. If you think it's going to be your dream machine for getting up hills without working, you're wrong. You still have to work getting up hills, you're still have to pedal hard getting up hills, you're going to be breathing hard getting up hills, but it's not nearly as, as, as much so a, a bike that isn't power assisted. So please consider that, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Hedges.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to kind of comment on what Supervisor Stroud just said. The Class 1 bicycles are the electric assist, they're the pedal assist type of bike. You are correct with those are the ones that you're, you know, you have to pedal them to get them there, but the Class 2 bicycles have an electric motor, doesn't necessarily mean you have to pedal with those. So I don't know if we do this, that we distinguish that only Class 1 bikes are on the trail, or if we, you know, go forward that it is Class 1 and Class 2. But I, I do agree with the, the speed limit and maybe some type of signage regarding when passing people, you know, slow down. It's sort of like, you know, when you're in a, in a bay and you don't want to create wakes in your boat, you slow down to five or 10 miles per hour, whatever. So something similar to that in passing people as well.
For information purposes, if you had a chance to look at each covenant here, Kevin, that has your department identified certain covenant relative to.
Tim, I'm shaking his head, yes, we have looked at them. We've also made changes on, you know, the bike path before, where we passed the local law, which is for the snowmobilers. So, so changes can be made to it, but I'll ask Tim if there's anything else that he's found regarding any covenants or anything on the bike path. Tim, you're on mute.
We're waiting on Tim, Dennis?
I'd like, we got two issues here, we're talking about safety, and then we're talking about e-bikes. I, I'd like to concentrate on the e-bikes. I have a Class 2 e-bike. It will go 20 miles an hour, not very far. The faster you go, the less distance you can travel. So if you're going from Lake George to Glens Falls, you don't want to be doing any 20 mile an hour stretches, because you'll end up pedaling all the way. But I'd like to make a motion that we allow Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes on the trail.
We have a motion from Mr. Dickinson to allow Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes on, on the trail. Do we have a second to that motion? There being no second.
Mr. Conover? I'll second that.
Gene Merlino on the second, thank you, Gene. Discussion? I was wondering what the, maybe Mr. Hedges or the county attorney could tell us what the correct process would be here. Comment was made this, that New York State, I assume, Motor Vehicle law, Fasano does not classify them as motorized vehicles, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the, the definition of a motor vehicle, which I think is VAT 125, excludes electric assist bikes.
So maybe.
In the definition.
If our attorney could make note of that, and then maybe we could talk a little bit here about, in the discussion about, or maybe Mr. Hedges, or maybe the county attorney might want to talk to us about what the process might be. It's just simply a matter of going to the court for approval, or is there a public hearing required, what, what?
I think the first thing, if you'll allow me, I think that Tim was going to discuss if there was any, any rules or covenants that were in the past for the bike path, that were created, that, that stated that. And Mr. Fasano, I don't know that it says motor, motor vehicles, I think it says motorized vehicles, but I will look into that.
Yeah, so let me, if I can address that. I've been talking to Andy Beers, who is the Director of the Empire State Trails, and I specifically asked him about the Albany Hudson Electric Trail, because it has the same signs, it says no motorized vehicles. And he said to me that that sign does not, it, it does not, it is not meaningful or doesn't apply to e-bikes. So that was Andy Beers that told me that, who's the Director of the Empire State Trails.
Can we? Tim?
Tim, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
I think you were going to comment about any each covenant.
Right, so I did look into, and like it says, motorized, they're not classifying these bikes as motorized, as Mr. Fasano explained. So I have actually laid it out that the state of New York does not register electric bikes unless they go over 22 miles per hour, then you're considered a moped, which then you follow the rules of the road. So Class 1 is an electric assist with pedal assist, only motor stops when the bike reaches 20. A Class 2 is electric bike assist equipped with a motor that can be exclusively used to propel. You don't have to pedal, you can exclusively propel the bicycle and stop when the. and stop when the bike, when it reaches the 20 miles per hour. Okay, this says you do not need a license to allow these on the bike way. The motor of this bike cannot exceed 750 watts. Uh, the rider must be 16 years of age and also wear a helmet. Um, so those are the only things that I found are the, the caveats as far as, because we don't fall into the motorized with these bicycles. So everything that's happened in the past doesn't apply here, so it's actually up to the committee.
I, I was just gonna ask Tim if he had found anything in any of the deep covenants for the bike paths when we put the bike path in, that, that had any reference to that?
It's motorized, sir, and there is no, they consider these non-motorized.
Uh, Mr. Dickinson, Dennis?
Uh, I, I, I was on the board when we passed that, believe it or not, uh, back in my youth. Uh, and the concern was specifically-
Noise.
-snowmobiles and motorcycles. Period.
I thought you were gonna say wagons.
No, you can bring your wagon around.
Well, in terms of process here, based on the motion, um, is I, uh, is, is the sense of this that, uh, in terms of the, uh, perhaps the county attorney, that, that whatever, if we were to pass such a resolution, uh, it would go to the full board?
Actually, Chairman Conover, I, I don't want to be throwing cold water on things. I would really love to have a chance to, uh, research any liability issues for the county that this may present. Um, part of my thing is to be paranoid. I really want to try to protect the county in case there were any liability issues from having vehicles like this on the bike trail with pedestrians and other people riding conventional bikes.
Um, you heard the, uh, concern from the committee, it's a pleasure of the committee at this, at this stage to, uh, collect this table and, and pending, uh, a report from the county attorney or, uh, Mr. Haydo?
I, I believe Supervisor just wanted to comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben.
That, that's fine, thank you, Chairman. I just had a question, um, how can a, a pedestrian or, or a layperson who's not familiar with the e-bikes identify the, the level of the bike if they want to make a, a complaint or, or voice their concerns about, um, an interaction that they may have had?
I, I'm not sure, uh, JP, maybe you can touch base on this. I mean, I, I, again, it's based on speed, I think, more than anything else. Uh, even the class threes are pedal assist, but they can go upwards at 25 to 30 miles an hour.
But if you're out, just to follow up, if, if you're out on a, on a boat and, uh, and you're a layperson, I mean, you don't know how many knots, uh, you know, uh, the boat passing you is, is going, uh, unless you have some type of a, uh, piece of equipment on you. Uh, and I guess that's my concern.
Sure, I don't know if JP can say if there's any distinguishing features between any of those bikes.
Yeah, so, uh, New York State, uh, law, starting next year, is that the, the bikes are, are, any new bikes that are sold, and I believe even existing bikes, are going to have to be labeled with their class. Um, now whether somebody, uh, you know, whether you're gonna be able to see that as the bike zooms by, I, I would doubt it. But, uh, they are supposed to be identified starting next summer with their class.
You're welcome, you're welcome, uh, Mr. Dickinson.
Ba- basically, a- all the e-bikes I've seen, the battery is relatively large, um, uh, for the bike. It's, it's probably, uh, uh, four to, uh, five inches square and, and over a foot long. And it's usually someplace obvious on the bicycle. It's either on a rack in the back fender or, uh, most of them are attached to the, uh, post for the seat. They're fairly recognizable, even at 20 miles an hour.
Sounds like to me like the committee is, um, uh, interested in, in taking action, but I can understand the, uh, concerns raised by the county attorney relative to, uh, wanting to take some time on this. Can we at least answer the question, uh, would an action by this committee to, uh, specifically provide for this as the use, uh, this would be something that would be put in the full board?
Yes, definitely, put it on the board on. And I would like to just double check the authorizing of the bike way legislation that authorized it in the first place, too, please.
And, uh, and I think that's a good thing because that would be, uh, give the public an opportunity to comment as well. Um, and that's always a good thing. Um, so, um, we have a motion, uh, to, uh, to approve this. Uh, uh, you, would you like to make the motion a contingent on, um, county attorney concurrence, uh, with the approach, uh, or not?
Uh, I, I'd be glad to do that, as long as he doesn't get too carried away with his paranoia.
Dennis, you made that motion, Gene, a second for you?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, the second agrees that, 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 um, on moving forward to the board, um, uh, Robert, yeah, if being that if, if there's something that's a red flag, uh, bring it back in a minute.
Yes, I'll do that, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Then you've heard the motion as, as, uh, as amended, uh, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Mr. Wild, Supervisor Wild.
Thank you, Chairman, I'm not on the committee, but as I've been listening to this, I just think about the future and there's always going to be changes and, and more evolution of these bicycles. And I think it's more of a safety issue. Um, and I would like to see signage across the board that goes, maybe it's every quarter mile, uh, that, um, talks about the protocol that's required to use the bike path. And if you're walking, stay to the right, if you're passing to the left, you know, I, I'm not gonna go through all the, the thoughts about how to do that. But I think we might be able to get by with just more safety and protocol signage than trying to limit this bike and that bike and coming back two years from now. Now all of a sudden, we have another bike that we need to consider. Just a thought.
Yeah, too much, but maybe Kevin, what you could do in response to that is, uh, perhaps you could, uh, uh, get, um, representations of comparable signage, uh, from other trails relative to this matter is that you could get out to the board on the type of signage that Mr. Wild, Supervisor Wild is making reference to in terms of what we might, um, want to put out there to, um, help people understand the due diligence of, um, property.
I can do that.
Should the board make a decision to do that, uh, of a something else?
Uh, thank you, uh, but Supervisor Brammer was up first there, I-
Sorry, Bobby, I didn't see you while there, uh.
Thank you, Supervisor Conover. My, my concern is, um, certainly the traffic that we have in Glens Falls and making sure that we understand from people in Glens Falls, uh, what kind of impacts these bikes are having before we affirmatively allow them on the bike path. I'm not saying that we need to do anything right now to prohibit them, but I think if we're going to allow them, we should have all the information in front of us as well as the signage ready to go. That's my comment, and so I'd ask you to hold off on making a motion today.
Uh, Mr. Gallo.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Kevin, when you're looking at sign, you know what I find really useful? Uh, I hate to say this, uh, on, on the speaker though, but it's the, uh, is the solar signs there that remind me the speed that I'm going. Um, you know, uh, most of the time I am under and I have to speed up. So I, I just, uh, wanted to, you know, maybe that's something we can, you know, there in, in see, so.
Good girl. Here's your thingy, Bobby.
Oh, my goodness, no, okay.
Any other comments, any discussion? Kevin, I think if you could, uh, put a hurry up on, on all that-
I can hear it.
-do as well, and, uh, but I would say that, uh, you know, that the idea would be to, over the next 20 days, those, that's all together so that we, uh, could address a lot of questions.
You should suggest, yes, courtesy of-
This was a wrong.
Uh, the, uh, um, you know, are, are there any, uh, is there any survey or reports out there of the pros and cons of the, the picture of activity on it, on a bike path?
Sure.
We heard today, uh, a lot about positives or certainly negatives as well. That would be something that would be- All right, then, you've heard the motion, you've heard the second, uh, are we ready for the question? All those in favor of, uh, moving forward with this signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Does that take you correct, uh, Kevin?
That does.
Okay, then we'll move right into, uh, public works.
Okay, I know this packet looks fairly thick, but I think we can probably go through it, uh, quite quickly. A lot of it's federal aid projects. Uh, the first one is to amend the existing grant for the Palisades Road Bridge Project. And then the second one is to increase the capital project, uh, for amending the existing grant for Palisades Road.
Let's bring one and two to the floor together, Mr. Garrity.
Yeah, I'll introduce one and two.
One and two, uh, Mr. Thomas on the second, thank you, uh, discussion? There being none, are we ready for the question then? All those in favor of approving one and two on the agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Carrie? The next item?
The next items are three, four, five, and six, all related to the Oxbow Moon Hill Road Project. Uh, number three would be amend the existing grant to add to construction phase funding for the project. Uh, number four would be do amend the existing contract with the consultant for construction inspection and construction support services. The next one would be to increase the capital project for construction. And then the last one would be the new contract for the contractor for construction of the project.
Mr. Garrity on the motion?
Three, four, five, and six.
Uh, Mr. Merlino on the second, thank you, Gene. Any further discussion on three, four, five, and six? There being none, are we ready for the question? All those in favor of approving three, four, five, and six of the agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
The next items on there are all related to the Bay Road Bridge Project, which are seven, eight, nine. The first one is to amend the existing grant to add the addition of right-of-way funds. Uh, the next, uh, would be do amend the existing contract with our consultant to do the right-of-way services. And, uh, the number nine would be to increase the capital project due to those right-of-way services.
And Carrie, you got on the motion, second, Mr. Thomas, next about discussion on the Bay Road Project? There being none, we're ready for the question? All those in favor of approving seven, eight, nine signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
The next two items on there are related to the Amstoville Road Federal Aid Project. And the first one is to amend the existing grant, uh, for the addition of right-of-way and Marcha Sully funding. And then the second would be to amend the existing contract, uh, for right-of-way services. And actually, I'm not sure why I didn't put Amstoville Road, it shouldn't be Bay Road for number 12. Uh, it should be increase the capital project for Amstoville for, for the, uh, amending the existing grant.
So it would be 10, 11, and 12?
10, 11, and 12.
Mr. Garrity again on the motion, second, Mr. Merlino, thank you, Gene. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving 10, 11, and 12 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
The next item on there is a miscellious resolution to authorize the chairman or chairwoman to sign just compensation for the Bay Road Bridge Project. Uh, this would be sort of for some right-of-way that may be needed around Lowe's for that Bay Road Bridge Project.
This is the item 13.
That's correct.
I'll move that.
Thomas on the motion, second? I'll figure it, uh, Mr. Garrity on the second, discussion? Are we ready for the question? All those in favor of approving 13 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Next item is item 14, which is a resolution to transfer of funds. Uh, as you all know, we had our first Household Hazardous Waste Day. Uh, it was a huge success. In fact, it was a success to the point that we had only budgeted for $24,000 this year, uh, and we used $22,000 of it for, uh, that, uh, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. So I reached out to our budget officer, uh, and I took, spoke with the county, uh, I'm sorry, with my chairman of this committee, uh, regarding money from contingency to fund the second Household Hazardous Waste Day, which would be in, uh, I believe in June, and it'll be held in Warrensburg. And again, we will be reimbursed 50% of this, uh, from DEC.
Well, let's, uh, bring this to the floor for discussion.
Move.
The Thomas on the motion, second, second, to Carrie on the second. Um, any comments, discussion? Great program. Um, the proper disposal of these things is very important. Go to heaven, it, it's not properly disposed of, so I think it's a good thing it's happening. All right, then, are we ready for the question? All those in favor of item 14 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Not Carrie. Uh, item 15?
The next item is in a, uh, to apply for and execute a New York State D grant, DEC grant through the CFA. Uh, as you all know, we are part of the Climate Smart Communities, we're actually considered a bronze, uh, community, I believe. Uh, one of the things that, uh, planning, I, I think this might have been referred yesterday to us, but this is for us to kind of look for grants. Uh, one of the ones that we're looking for is an organics management plan, which is basically for composting. Uh, as you all know, as part of the local solid waste management plan, we were going to look into, uh, doing some educational components as well as the possibility of, whether it be a pilot project or a full-blown project with a private, uh, public partnership for composting. Uh, there's a new law under DEC, which is a food scrap waste law, which states that any large food facility, such as a grocery store or restaurant, uh, if there's a composting facility within 25 miles of, uh, their place of business, they are to take their, their food scraps basically there. This would be to us, basically, that it's a creating a planning tool of what a composting facility would look like, where we could cite one. Uh, there will be a cost associated with this if we get the grant. I'm, I've looked at some other grants of this, it's, uh, probably, uh, it's a 50/50 cost. I don't know if we can use our, kind of our in-kind, any in-kind services for this. Uh, I'm not sure that we will be able to, but most consultants would do this in the range of probably 75, 70 to, to $80,000 to put this organics management plan together. Uh, but we are under, I think, a deadline, I could wait till next month, uh, to bring this, but I thought I'd bring it early so we can get to work on the plan if it's approved, uh, or get to work on the grant if it's approved. Uh, but I believe the applications are due by July 30th.
All right, we bring this forward for discussion. Sure, Thomas, uh, do we have a second, bring, pardon, Mr. Merlino, a discussion? I mean, I think we, let's say the obvious, we all know that, uh, if we can begin to take some percentage of the organic waste out of the waste stream and compost it, we reduce the tonnage, uh, and the cost of that disposal enormously. And, uh, I think that, uh, I would say that, you know, uh, if there's, uh, if you're looking to do any pilots here, uh, pilot demonstration type projects, perhaps at the municipal level, any municipality might be interested in participating in that type of pilot. Let Kevin know. Um, and, uh, maybe we have some real practical application as well as, uh, putting the plan together, but, but I think this is a major part of our overall plan and, yeah, it would be a major step forward if we could figure out a way to begin to take, uh, food product, compostable, compostable wa- waste out of the waste stream and use it for fertilizer or whatever.
Ab- absolutely, and I, I would say that most of the numbers for, for, uh, food waste in the waste stream, the numbers vary, you can look on the internet, it's, uh, but it ranges from anywhere from 34% to 43% of your solid waste.
Oh, there's no question, no question. You take that product out of the waste stream, you, you reduce the tonnage by a lot. All right. What's the pleasure of the board relative to this grant? Are we ready for the question? All those in favor of making this application signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you.
All right, the, the last item we have on there is number 16, which is a request to have an intermunicipal agreement with the village of Lake George. Uh, this, I, I will put this on me, although we've still been following the old contract. Uh, this ran out in 2018, uh, but the, the mayor and I were working on, uh, kind of a new agreement there. They've been getting hit with, uh, for all the tickets, they have a company that they use when tickets are written, uh, when tickets are written for the parking lot. They have a company called, uh, and I, I don't know if the mayor's on Complast, who basically, uh, charges them a 20% fee. So what was happening was we were collecting, uh, all the funding and then we were paying the village only 10%, but then paying them 10%, they're still paying that 20% fee. So this would change, this would initiate or renew that intermunicipal agreement for the next five years, but it would change that they could take that 20% off top first, uh, and get that paid before we, you know, we remove that, or giving them that 10% back, so. So this is just to renew the agreement, and it would carry on for the next five years.
Do I have anything, any motion to bring this to the floor for consideration?
I'll move it.
Gary, I heard a voice. Dennis on the second. Any further discussion? There being none, buddy?
Thank you. Kevin, could you just explain that one more time about the 20% issue?
So, and I'm not sure, is, Timmy, is the mayor on?
Yes, I'm on, Kevin.
Will you allow me to let him? Because he's more familiar.
Good to have you, Bob. What are we looking at here?
Well, the village contracts with Complus, which is a firm that follows up on all unpaid tickets. They're the, they're the company you get a letter from five months after you haven't paid and told you to pay them. They've been charging the village 20% of, their percentage is 20% of everything they collect. What we'd like to do is deduct that 20% prior to paying the county their share of the parking ticket revenues. We sent a copy of our contract to the county to show them that our contract calls for a fee of 20%. We have not been doing that. We, it was just an oversight on our part, so that's up, that's the village's fault. But we let, the contract is up now, so we'd like to include that 20% fee. And we'd like to remove it and pay complex directly so that the county doesn't have to issue another check. And we have to issue that and deduct it before we pay the county. That's basically, basically it.
I understand that they want to get the net revenue before they decide that they want to.
They return, they return the money to us that they collect, and then we have to pay them the fee, so the percentage of the fee. So we'd just like to deduct it before we send it, send the total amount due to the county.
Thank you so much. Are we splitting that contract cost with the village? And if so, aren't we splitting this cost as well? Why is the county taking on the whole 20%?
That's it. They just charge 20% for the tickets that they're able to collect. They're strictly on a commission, strictly on a commission basis.
We would, we would be paying for the contract. Why don't we, I mean. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I just wanted to add for Supervisor Brammer, the village takes care of everything with those meters. They do all the maintenance. They change the paper on them every day. We don't do anything with them whatsoever. We put them out there every spring and then remove them in the fall. So they do all the maintenance and everything through those throughout the year.
Any other discussion, comments? There being none, are we ready for the question? All those in favor of item 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. Anything else, Kevin?
Yeah, the last items we have on there is I'm going to, I'm going to hand out pictures real quick of a lot of the road construction projects that have been done for this year. Start them with Gene here. But he has quite a few pictures to be shown of the projects that have started with here. I think we're three quarters of the way through our project. I think we have maybe two or three more to wrap up. But I also think, and this goes into the next item, for CHIPS funding this year, I'm not sure that all the towns have received their letter yet, but the county has received their letter. And there's been, just to let you all know, as part of the budget, there's been an increase in approximately 23, anywhere from 20 to 25% for CHIPS funding. As far as the Pave New York and the Extreme Winter Recovery, which we refer to as EWR, there's almost a 53% increase in what we receive from the state this year. So it's significant, and I'm hoping that'll allow us to get a couple more projects in later this year. And then the last thing I had, which isn't necessarily written down on there, is I just wanted to give an update. We received the next check from FEMA. Well, actually, I got the email that we will be receiving it for the October 2019 storm. This was for the Hague Project, which totaled $324,800 plus or minus. So we're getting that very shortly.
Thank you for that report. I don't know that we've received our CHIPS notification. Have any of the towns received their CHIPS notification?
It usually goes the highway supervisor. But we got them on.
It's online.
It's online.
It's online as well. That's correct.
There we go. All right, then. Any other matters to come between the committee? There being none, Charles, did a motion to adjourn? Gary to adjourn. Mr. Thomas on the second. All in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.